So, just clarification pieces there. I know the food services, I know that Jen Lathwa and I went through and provided our recommendations on that, and we took a look at the other items. Didn't see anything really of concern as far as the updates on the other items, so.
And I noticed we have one on vending machines. Do we still have our non-functional?
I know that.
Out there?
It's right. So, the only vending machine that truly can have different choices should be in the staff lounge. And I thought there was some work I would have to take a look at.
Okay.
I haven't used it personally, but I thought they were trying to get it up and functional this past summer, so.
Yeah, because if that water one is still just sitting there and it's, it doesn't work, you need to call the vendor.
Get it out of here. Sounds like a good plan, so.
Okay, the next item was clarification, and it was one that I had some concerns about. And after reading that, that's cleared all that up, so I don't know if we want to just add that to the next group for approval next board meeting.
Right, yeah, that's totally fine. It can be incorporated as one component, then we'd be approving it all, so.
Anybody else have any concerns with that at all, or? Sick bank, use and contribution.
So, I know that there were a number of different things that we've been trying to look at. I provided you guys, provided the board with, you know, some different options. This one from Cambridge, it's, so the new superintendent in Spooner is from Cambridge. And I reached out to Spooner because they have a sick leave bank where people could donate their time to a specific staff member. But it looks like Spooner is going this direction, which doesn't have that option anymore. I talked to other, a couple other superintendents, and I know a neighboring district said they went away from that donating to individual people because they thought it was a favoritism thing, but that doesn't mean that we can't look at something like that. Also, just getting some more input from, from our attorney where it provided, you know, the catastrophic leave policy, granted it's from a city, but it's still a local government and how they operate it and how they have the wording there, as well as just his feedback on our plan. So, I know Leanne and I have been, Leanne and I have been taking a look at our current plan and really trying to figure out how we could massage what we have right now to kind of get after some of the requests, but then, you know, get some feedback, so.
I have a finance meeting tomorrow afternoon, too, so I've got several questions of things that we've been covering that. We're just going to check in with our neighboring people and see what kind of things they do at their schools, and that's one of the things that's covered, because it's kind of nice to know the locals.
Right.
Smaller schools, too, what they operate to, just as I was.
Well, let's try to get as much information as we can for the next regular board meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully we can tackle that then.
Do you guys have any hopes or thoughts on what you would like to see in there possibly?
I thought on it over the weekend. I felt like maybe I was being a little harsh in my, in my input on it, because then when you look at it, too, they have like, how long they can take, which I think will help combat some of like, any concerns of misuse. And then it's the board that has to approve it.
Right.
And things like that.
Yep. Yeah, seeing some of these other models, I think it provides some interesting input on how we can, you know, reshape what this looks like. And be inclusive yet have some way of approval process, I guess, so. Because I think that that's it, is making sure that we're, we're being empathetic, but we're also making sure that we're, we're applying equity to this. That, I think that's the big concern, and hearing from a couple districts that do not have this, that that's one of the main reasons why they don't have it.
Yeah.
Is that, how do you ensure equity in this? You know, so, especially in, you know, I shouldn't say especially, but in smaller districts, you know everyone.
Right.
And I think it's harder to have some of that anonymity, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, I think as long as we have another level of approval.
Right.
Then we should be safe on that.
Okay. So, I appreciate that input, because I think that gives us a little bit of understanding where the board's coming from, and then we can get more information on this, too, so.
Do you have any preferences or thoughts on whether these just people that have contributed to the bank, or allowing people that have not contributed to the bank to be able to access the account?
I think that it should be someone that can contribute to the bank. I think it's more reasonable to look at changing the like timeframe of when they can start contributing. And it's just my personal opinion, and like, I think that we want to be empathetic to the person, but we also want to be empathetic to the rest of the staff that are then, you know, going to be down a staff member for those certain amount of times, or, you know, who have been donating. You don't want to create unnecessary animosity between them either, so I think it's reasonable that it's for people that donate, but we could maybe look at changing.
The time, yeah.
The timeframe of when they start donating.
Because now we have a category of people that can't donate.
Right.
Right.
Which is the first three years, or?
Right, right.
And so I think by expanding that, then allowing someone to donate, whether they're the first, second year, whatever.
Right.
I don't think it should be the first year, you know, you've got to get a year in, and then year two, you're available.
Right.
Well, you have to work a person's year.
Right.
Before you're going to have any extra time to be able to, like, you'd be going into your second year.
Yeah.
Right.
In my mind.
Yeah, so that kind of opens us then, too, because, you know, there's a couple that I've seen that has a minimal number of sick days that a person has to hold before they can donate, which, I mean, what we were toying with, or the idea that I was thinking about was like a minimum of 15 days, that's three weeks, when you put it out there. Who would be eligible to donate would be year number two.
Yeah.
Right, so, I, there was another one that their, their minimum number was a bit higher, you know, so, I mean, so there's different ways of looking at this or coming at it, so.
So, once you donate to the bank, is that like irretrievable? I mean, if nobody uses it, does it sits in the bank, or do you?
You don't ever get it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the most you could do is one day per year?
That's the way we have it set up.
Yeah.
Right now.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it has to stay that, it's however we want to set it. If people want to donate some more, I mean, you obviously want to have a max on it, because it will be too cumbersome and it could be costly if we're providing more.
And then the individuals sort of bank stays with them throughout their career? I mean, if someone hears 20 years, they've already built up a whole?
Yeah, whatever they have not used.
Right.
Themselves or donated, that's theirs, so.
In order to, they cap at 140, and then the sick bank is meant to cap at, what is that, like 250?
200.
200.
So then another thing we talked about some today is, it used to be that you needed to put five days in, and my thought was you put your five days in, and then you're done contributing. But could somebody put in, even after they've already put in their five days, if they've hit their maximum, say the 140 days in their bank, could they, and they had 145 at the end of the year, could they still contribute two days beyond their five days? If the bank puts up?
So.
So, it's just another level.
Yeah, there's several nuances to this that we really have to take a look at, and I know what the request was as well, and getting that happy medium, that makes sense and will work, so.
All right. Barrett School Business Service?
Check. So, we had that presentation last week, and just once again, you know, what the solutions are, just providing that information, if there's, you know, further discussion or thoughts that we wanted to take a look at with this potential service, or any concerns that the board has, so.
Well, we, have we had this type of service prior?
We have not.
And have we run any troubles by not having?
I would say no. Actually, Leanne, did we have Barrett involved in 1617?
No, the referendum?
No, okay, so nothing there.
My thoughts just kind of, well, and in reality, you know, kind of where we were at, at that point, there wasn't, there wasn't anything extra to work with, to even look at.
Right.
What could we do on the next year? We were looking at that point, how do we, how do we stay solvent?
The only reason I wanted this for consideration is, is if we're, if we're thinking about this potential for a capital referendum, I also want us to take a look at that financial picture, you know, years out, and that, this is a tool that could be useful in that, projecting what this is, and how certain numbers could really impact, you know, what our future budgets could be. That's, that was truly it, so.
So, do you think it's, well, if we, if we never got to referendum, would it make sense to not have this at all then, or?
Yes.
Or when you put it the other way, if we do, I mean, how, and they do it for the one year and project it out and do all this happy math, I mean, after that's done, is there a need to have an ongoing?
No, I would say no, you do not need to have an ongoing, and this is, this is an annual thing, and you don't have to, it's not a subscription.
Yeah.
So, it's paid by year, but I think getting it, I mean, it could be useful, that snapshot, where do we sit in two, three, five, you know, two to five years with our current finances and how things could ripple? I think, you know, I've been trying to be upfront with, with the board on, you know, where we're sitting at, you know, with our current funding situation, and we're all right right now. But I will say that if we continue this trend with our state funding and where things are going, it's going to get tricky, and.
And what would Barrett do to help us, I guess, either better understand how to move forward, or?
Right. I think, yeah, I know they're tapped in very well with school finance and how things have gone, and not saying that they have a magic crystal ball that can really see the future, but they've seen the trends and they can provide that guidance as to where they could see some things going, or are there some things that we could do to help shape our financial picture in the future a little better? And it's just giving us that knowledge and giving us an understanding of, this is where we've been, this is the track record, and this is, if we continue it on that track, this is what it's going to look like, so that's it, so.
I see a benefit in like just having kind of like that health check, and maybe like those old set eyes, like, okay, like, we are sitting where we think we're sitting, or, you know, and having some of that advisory things.
Right, right.
I just was wondering, like, how much, or like, if, is it you and Leanne, what, do you feel like it's attainable to add that on to what you're already doing, or is it going to bog you down?
Right, and that, yeah, and that, and Leanne can attest this, I've been trying to protect her time and energy as much as I can, good or bad, anyway. But that's, that's part of this, is with them, it's providing them the information they do the work versus us trying to map this out, but that's, once again.
I don't, I also wonder how much work it will be for me to get them what they need. I mean, they made it sound like it would not be much at all, a couple hours or whatever. I don't, I don't know if that's.
Right, when I was listening to his presentation, I was like, you give them so much, but then like you can go in and keep adding.
Mm-hmm.
And if you already have a system down and then you're adding this on top to your system.
I was looking at the site today, or the links, trying to see if it showed an example of what kind of reports and stuff that came out, or what kind of information that it was going to be asking for, and I could not find that at all.
Okay. Well, obviously with this, it's, if we're, if we're projecting this into November of next year that we have a potential referendum, we've got some time to take a look at this, with something that we can contact them, and you are involved in that discussion, get a little more detail as to what this, what this would entail. Because I'm with you guys, I don't want to put extra stuff on there, on Leanne's plate, but I also want to make sure that we are looking honestly and intentionally at what the future holds for us financially. I think trying to pursue other stuff with updating things to our facility and ignoring the finances is not wise, right? So, that's, that's my only reason for bringing this for consideration.
Do we have data systems that they can tap into to get the information they need, or, I mean, how, I'm just, why would they need a person to provide them with numbers, or?
Right, so I would say that they would need to, so they get the overall picture, but there might be some small things that they need to fill in, because when I first came on as superintendent, part of my Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators provided a six-month free subscription to that model, and it was, it was crazy, the information that I was able to see as far as analytic with our mill rate compared to our surrounding districts or like districts, taking a look at what our overall projection was over the past five years of spending and where we were going for pupil spending. So, there's lots of great information that's in it already, and, you know, he was talking about what our fund balances, and like, we didn't supply that to him, but they're able to get some of that information.
Yeah, because he already said he was aware that we don't have a current debt.
Right, right, so there's a lot of information out there already, so that's, that's where I think that quandary is, what additional data do they need, so.
It did sound like by that workshop, I think I had it written down, like, it was, you know, those four hours, wherever it was, at the workshop, and then maybe another 30-minute thing, that like, most of it could be going as far as getting to that main stuff, but then.
Right.
Would we be comfortable with just doing the budget model, or are we really wanting the school analytics added on?
I, I think the school analytics is a nice to have. I don't think it's absolutely crucial, because, I mean, we can compare ourselves to other districts, but at the end of the day, it's, it's going to come down to what does it look like for our district? And that's, that's truly what, what I want to know, and I think what community wants to know, too, so.
Do you know of any other schools using this service?
Right this instant, no, but I know that other districts have used them with some other projections, so, especially if they're looking at operational referendum, because you want to get a picture of where things are headed, so you can get a good idea of what's necessary spending to get there, so.
Northwestern said the other day that they use it every couple years or so.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I guess I'd like to know, I'd like to be able to see and understand what exactly they work for and what they're using it for.
That's my last district, they went to an operational and they had this, so they could understand where they sit and what they need to do, so.
That's a little bit my thought, I was wondering if we're better off if you're looking at going to a referendum for sure, it would be better to do it at that time to incorporate that information into it.
That's, and that's truly is, I guess that's why I was bringing this stuff up, is truly having a good analysis of our facilities and our finances, so we have all that information out there, and we can make informed decisions on it, so.
All right, well, I can continue the discussion for another day at this point, I think.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is chaperone stipend considerations. I know we did discuss this a bit last meeting, so.
I think for us, you know, Leanne and I just talked about some different ideas here. These are some considerations, not saying that we have to go with them, but just some different thoughts, so. Because I know there's some talk about like class trips or overnight trips, you know, how do we cover that piece? You know, the Swift Nature Camp and, as well as Wolf Ridge have already been incorporated into our, annually, as far as taking kits. I know the only change was moving Wolf Ridge to sixth grade instead of having both camps for fifth grade, which is, that's a lot. But there's, there's a lot of great learning that happens at Wolf Ridge. I guess I would recommend continuing that, because you get not only science and environmental stuff, you also get historical knowledge there as well, because they, they do like vertrading and what some of the early settlers did there, so.
Well, so, are we thinking that the teacher's salary that is responsible for this, that's already built into that, or?
It is, all right, because they get the, it's part of their daily contract. However, that doesn't take into account, you're supervising kids pretty much 24/7 during the time.
Right, right.
That's, I think that's part of it, as well as some of the planning and prep ahead of time, so.
Maybe it's the planning outside of the normal school day?
Some of it is, and that's, I know that there's a timeline that I provided to the board to take into consideration, so.
So, we would be looking at 600 for Swift, and then 900 for Wolf Ridge?
Up to that, yeah.
And then, so does it just depend on how many they're sending for how many paid staff we would have to send?
Right. That's why I was just putting a max on it. I think the, Swift, did we have two this year? Two staff members stayed there?
Oh, gosh, putting me on the spot, Beth stayed there. I'm trying to remember, Shannon stayed there the whole time.
I thought, yeah, I thought there were two individuals, but, and that was some consideration too, if a staff member didn't stay overnight but was there for a couple hours, you know, would we, would we honor that in some method, whether it's a stipend or if it's, you know, time off or something like that? Yeah, so that's, that's some stuff that could also be put into this, too, so.
Those are some of those things that we have to be cautious of, because we're talking about, sometimes when they go on some of the, excuse me, field trips, they go, like, when the music goes down to the cities for a play, they're gone until late at night, but they don't get anything extra, because it's something that they request they're doing to for their class, so we have to make sure that if we're going to pay for the extra time, that we're setting some guidelines, because we're looking at.
Yeah, there's multiple.
Yeah.
You're exactly right.
And it's not only the base pay, you know, the number includes Wisconsin Retirement, Social Security, so there's benefits on top of that, because these are being processed as payroll items.
Yeah, so.
I think it's reasonable to consider the ones where it's like Swift and Wolf Ridge, where we're kind of like building in it as part of their curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Those, and then how you guys have it laid out with like overnight trips and like the class trips where it's funded by the class or by the team, whether they have to fundraise it, you know, whatever it may be, I think that's more reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
For not to just, for them to kind of take some of that out when they're choosing some of those things.
Right, okay. Is there anything else you guys want us to take a look at, or more information that you want for consideration here?
So, Carolyn, you're kind of differentiating the ones that the teachers say, hey, this would be good for my class to do, as opposed to the ones where the district is kind of saying, this is.
Hey, we kind of want you to, we want you to do Swift or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where did we come up with the 115, I don't know, where did we get that from?
So, if you recall, the request that was sent.
Yeah.
Right, the request was sent, it was based off of that, and that's where we're kind of breaking this down a little bit, so.
Yeah, okay.
Other thing, to me, to, although it's not the stipends, like with early Swift and like Wolf Ridge, generally they're fundraising for those, like early Swift, if there's not enough, then that's coming from one of our grants. You know, you might want to set some guidelines on that, too, because if they aren't fundraising for those, or getting funds from the students for those, that can, you know, be a big hit for the district also.
Any other discussion questions? If not, we can move on and consider that at our regular November board meeting. Okay, the next item is to discuss appointment of board delegate and alternate delegate to the Wisconsin State Education Convention.
Yeah, as we were saying in the update, it's going to be January before we know it, and the WASB has already been sending out notifications about the convention and, you know, the dates, they've got the breakout sessions already. One thing that is not produced yet are the, are the proposals that the delegate and/or alternate delegate would be pulling on, and I'm anticipating that coming out in early December, and that's typically when we see that come out. But I would say that Linda's already received it, that registration is open, which means, you know, we have to figure out who's going to be attending so we can get the registration taken care of, as well as booking hotels, because that goes very quick, so.
Linda, has Brad contacted you with whether he may be going or not, or?
Hasn't.
Okay, I mean, he normally goes.
Right.
And he's normally the delegate, but I'll, you know, I'm not going to, that's a decision that he's going to have to make.
Right, right. It's, obviously it's not like critical right this instant, but I think the sooner the better in determining this. I will talk to him tomorrow and just try to get his thoughts on this, but I think it's wise to be considering at least an alternate delegate if he's attending.
Yeah.
Or if he's not, so.
So, Brittany and I went last year.
That's right.
So, I don't intend on going this year, so, and I don't know if our members have any desire to go, it's in January for about three days.
Yep.
It's not an ideal time to travel to Milwaukee, but it's the times we live in. So, if you do, I mean, think about it, it's, I think it's valuable to go to, but you're required to, so give it some thought. If you have any questions, we certainly talk to you, Brittany and I, or Brad, I think Brad's gone quite a few years, too.
Right.
How many could we have assigned, or?
I don't think, there's not a requirement.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's the preference, that's the preference. I would say that, you know, there are several different breakout sessions with lots of great, you know, experiences from other districts about, you know, how they've handled referendum stuff, or how they've dealt with decreasing enrollment, or, I mean, there's lots of. there's lots of different breakouts where we can get, you know, different ideas, or, or have that opportunity to collaborate with other people that have experienced stuff that we're starting to experience or plan to experience, so. So, it, it is really good in that benefit, and, and really building connections with, with other districts and other board members from districts, so, it's a good thing.
And then they have the large convention floor where they have every, you know, architect, and school builder, and finance, and just a whole array of school-related vendors.
Vendors, yeah, that's, that's a good way to put it.
Anyway, think about it, it's all paid for. Uh, next item is the middle school, high school student handbook updates.
Yeah, so there's just a brief update regarding cell phones, just needed some clarification. Something come up earlier this year, so just clarifying the expectation for, for students.
And since we're, we're talking that topic, I mean, just knowing that this, this specific topic on cell phones will probably be discussed in the next month or two, except because of the signed bill now, or making it a mandatory deal where board's established policy on, you know, cellphone use. I, I know we've gone down that route last year already, but just solidifying what that looks like, so.
But our current policy, I believe, complies with the new law, or is there?
It, it, it does, yeah, it's just making sure that there isn't something that we haven't seen yet from the bill. That's, that's it, so.
Okay. And so we might want to alter the policy to at least cite now, this is also Wisconsin statute.
That, that's correct, that's correct, so.
Right. All right, we have a number of Start College Now applications for consideration.
Actually, yeah, it's just one that...
I thought there was one from last time.
Very, yeah, so, so this one was submitted for College Now. It's a student that lives in our district, and we missed that. It's just making sure you guys are aware of it. I think we'll double check on the credits, because I, yeah, I don't think this student has submitted previously, so.
So, lives in the district, but does, does or does not attend the district?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's, that's this, that's the, the strange thing with Start College Now through the tech college, is it's any student that lives in our district, whether they attend here or different, versus early college credit, it's the district that they attend, I'm pretty sure, so.
So, this is a decent loan of credits. Is that of any concern? I assume that there's still some, either going to school somewhere, or virtual, or whatever, this is in addition to that?
That's, it should be, well, for us, it would be, yes, above that. However, I, I know with state statute, there has to be very good valid reason why we would disapprove that.
Okay.
So, and I don't know if that really meets that requirement, but I can certainly, you know, that's something that we can certainly check into.
And we don't currently have a cap on number of credits you can...
There, no, that's, that's in state law, that, that's it, so.
Per year?
Per student.
Per student, okay. So, that's only my only concern, it just seems like it's, it's a lot of credits to take while you're still doing other school work.
Right, right.
Did they sign off on all of these? I kind of remember saying that if they did not, if they dropped or did not, that the parents were liable for this.
Right. That is in the paperwork. I know we had a question about this. That the early college credit was definitely that, that the parents are responsible for credits if they drop out or fail to successfully complete, so.
But if they do, then the district is responsible for paying.
That is correct, that is correct.
All right.
This might be a dumb question.
No.
But what is the check if alternate?
Uh...
Like, I think it's if you can't get in on that second, like, yeah, there's like a first, second, and a third, so, yeah.
Okay, so it could potentially just be the one?
Could potentially be the one class.
I think so.
Yeah.
And not all three?
Right, and, and we can look into that as far as those alternate classes, so.
And I would have to, I mean, it looks like this was submitted a while ago?
Yes. It, so the, the requirement is that it needs to be submitted to the district by October first, so, yes.
And is there a deadline which we have to get to?
It's surprisingly not that hard and fast, just before the semester starts, so.
Okay.
Okay. Because I had that very question last year, talking to Northwood Tech, said, you know, it's, it's for, for the district to receive it by October first, but then we have some time to get those taken care of, so.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the application.
I will motion second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the approval motion carries.
I'll make a motion. Close session.
Oh.
All right, ready to convene in close session? Consider employment, a motion that compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Scott has motion to move, go into close session.
I second.
Carolyn, second. At?
Six forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Okay, do you need a break, or? Oh, yeah, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion ca-